I have the green.
Use your whole light, please, then.
Okay, we have four votes Cast J, no votes Cast N.
There is a copy of the Open Meeting Act posted by the entrance to the council chambers and is available for public review. Tonight, we're going to have an education with Jeremy LaBrake, Memorial Methodist Church. Hi.
Hi.
Glad to see you.
Yes, so before I pray, I just wanted to offer my thanks to everybody involved in the swimming pool project. It's very exciting. It's this Wednesday, right?
Uh huh.
And so I have a couple of kids, and I know there's a lot of young families excited in our community. And I know there's other exciting projects in this community as well that we should be thankful for on the horizon. So very exciting times, and I just wanted to say thanks. So let's pray. Well, God, you tell us from your word that every time we pray, that we ought to start with rejoicing, with praising you, because you are a good God. And you tell us that to not be anxious about anything, but instead, with thanksgiving in our heart, make our request known to you, and then you will give us peace. Because, God, when we start with thanksgiving, we're reminded of all the good things that you've done in our life. Even when things seem really, really bad, when we start with a thankful heart, with a grateful heart, we're reminded of all the good. Lord, I thank you for this community. I thank you for the leaders in this community that are making real change and real impact, especially for the young families in our community. We thank you for the ones that have gone before us, the past. We're grateful for the road that they've paved to get us to the present. We're blessed to be a part of what's going on right now in the present day, and we're hopeful for a great future. We thank you, Lord, and we love you, and I just pray that you give everyone in this room tonight wisdom and understanding that can only come from you, and most of all, Lord, we thank you for your love. And you showed us your love by sending your son to take our place, and we thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jeremy.
You have the Pledge of Allegiance.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any announcements or recommendations tonight?
Just one really quickly. We have Grant Paddock with Nebraska Public Power here. I'm going to let him go ahead and give a presentation, introduce himself. He's replacing Stan Claus, who was our longtime representative. And so excited to have Grant on board, and I'll turn the floor over to Grant.
Good evening. Appreciate how you're doing this, Stan.
Hey, you can do it how you'd say it.
All right.
More comfortable.
Um, yeah, so my name is Grant Landic. I've been in MPP for seventeen years and really enjoying my time. And this has gotten on my aspirational list to go into this school for retail side or wholesale side of MPP's business. And opportunity came up. Stan's retiring under the state senate, and so he retired at the end of the year and took over. And he's still part-time for the transition and kind of handoff. So my goal is to get out, meet all the city councils, the village board members, just to get out there and say, here's the new guy. Call me if you play, and say, here's my card. And I know that's kind of seems backwards, but that's what I'm here for. So I want to be transparent, open, honest, and so we have, whether it's good or bad, I want to be able to be available for you guys. I left a sheet in front of all the council members, just kind of goes over the energy report for the community. On the very left there, kind of right in the most important part, MPP collected and remitted $1.3 million in lease payments to the city and $137,000 in the city sales tax, 23. So that's just kind of a little snapshot of 23. Gross revenue tax paid to Willow County, half a million dollars. Some of that obviously triples down to you guys as well. So just got some fun facts there. Energy efficiency incentives, so 23, this is a snapshot of all the efficiency, energy efficiency payouts, dollar amounts that were paid out to cook customers. So we have $19,000. That's not a lot, but some communities haven't had any, they just don't know about some of our programs that we have, some of our financial kickbacks that you can get. And I can send those, some of those to you, Nate, if you want to do some, you know, inserts in some of your water billings or something like that, just say, you know, this is, this is stuff we have available for you, whether it's EV charging station at your home. Could be anything, down to $30 tune-up credit on your HVAC system. So pretty nice. People don't know about that. So we want to get, promote that stuff. And then on the right side, fifty-six percent carbon-free. So with that carbon-free footprint, nuclear is wrapped up in the bed. So if you don't know, we do have a nuclear generation facility in Brownville on Missouri River. It's becoming more and more popular, especially in a smaller, smaller form. So we're looking at having some, some sort of new generation, and it may be including some nuclear, more of that. It's proven, I mean, for years, we put Navy members in submarines, and it's the same concept, just online. So it's fairly safe, so don't get too scared on that kind of, get worried about it. That is on the horizon. On the backside, I have some more numbers, ninety-three thousand commercial and industrial customers. We serve eighty communities. Actually, it's kind of eighty-one. Lodge Bowl, Nebraska's coming online, becoming a retail customer. Just added Paxton, Nebraska as well, not too long ago, beginning this year. And another highlight, again, we're very diverse, like in the front, the front of the page, wind, coal, nuclear, gas, solar, a little bit of everything. Some of those, as you might know, that we are part of the Southwest Power Pool. Southwest Power Pool means that we are a big collective group of utilities across eight states that we are able to submit our excess generation and off-sell that to other states and other utilities, and it's a huge benefit to not only MPP, but our customers. You might remember some of that wholesale credit, PCA credit that came on with your lease payment, or it's even on your bills, so you can see it. It actually dropped off beginning of this year. But the last three years, I think we had PCA credit that was given a kickback to all our customers. And then lowest rates in the U.S. Obviously, we're very proud of that. The last eleven years, we've had zero percent increase in our retail rates. Pretty unsaid when you consider, I don't know what else is not going to help the price. It'll be everything, right? So our rates, our retail rates have stayed steady on our, on the zero percent increase. With the bad news, that's not going to be forever. Actually, we're looking at a two percent increase next year on average across the retail side. So just, I don't think more communication about that, but the board voted on that last month, and it was approved. So two percent increase next year. With that, is anybody got questions? I'll try to answer them. Awesome. I am as well, and I appreciate you having me. I apologize for the miscommunication with last month that was on the agenda, but.
It's busy right now. Everybody's running around.
Yep. Yeah, it was kind of stormy that night.
It was.
Yeah, it's good to be here.
Well, oddly enough, I was a looped ticket.
Oh, yeah.
So we're not either, yeah, we were talking to you, I don't know.
We're okay. So it's good to have you come out here, and we welcome working with you. We'll look forward to it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Nate?
That's it.
Okay. The consent agenda is approved on one motion. Any item listed on the consent agenda may, by the request of any single council member or public agenda speaker, be considered as a separate item under the regular agenda. Anything on the consent agenda, anything? Staff, anything? Anybody in the public? Okay, we have a motion.
On the consent agenda, I make a motion that we accept items A to H. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This will be a discussion.
Are we voting?
We'll see what happens. We'll see what happens, okay.
Ooh.
No one?
I had to tell this. Mine came up.
All right.
Let me, I want to log out.
Maybe you're catching on, Jeanne, or not, Darcy's. Well, the light's still on.
Do you know what the question was?
Six, one.
Smart.
Uh, it should be your first thing that you mentioned.
My fingers almost hit something.
I don't know, Will. Are you in yet?
Oh, I almost forgot.
I didn't say.
Oh, yeah, I did.
There it was. There we go.
I got it.
Oh, me now?
Yeah, you now.
Okay, four votes Cast J, no votes Cast N.
Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda. We've got a presentation from Erica Bush with West Central Nebraska Development in regards to properties in their designated area. They should be declared a nuisance. Properties that should be rescinded from the previous declaration of nuisance and properties that need abatement. Do we have a motion to?
Tonight, I will be presenting on the 2024 McCook Nuisance Abatement Program.
Just one second.
Finish. Okay, sorry.
This one's just your presentation.
This is the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, Erica.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen here. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Good evening. Erica Bush with West Central. Tonight, I will be presenting on the 2024 McCook Nuisance Abatement Program. Maybe. On our agenda tonight, we are recommending for one property to be declared a nuisance by resolution, two properties for a motion to abate, and ten properties for a resolution to rescind. And I will go over each property individually. First on our agenda, we are recommending a property to be declared a nuisance. And I would just like to remind you that every motion or every step that we take forward just provides a property owner with additional time to clear the, or to clear the nuisance items. So when we declare our property a nuisance, we provide that property owner with a letter that has an additional deadline of about three to four weeks for them to clear those items, as well as a motion to abate, which is just a motion, but it's just another step forward. And all property owners will receive a letter giving them additional time to clean up. So this first property, 2024 MCC 077 at 1007 Missouri Avenue. And this picture is for identification purposes only. This property has scrap wood, and the scrap wood that is neatly stacked is of no concern. It's discarded scrap wood on the property, as well as a plastic sheeting, scrap iron. And this picture will show you, again, the trailer is always changing. So the trailer with the metal is of no concern because it wasn't there last month, it was empty. So it obviously is for recycling. So the items of concern in this picture would be kind of along the building, and it looks like scrap wood or scrap iron. Next picture, you can see the discarded items, scrap wood, scrap metal, the plastic sheeting, concrete blocks, cinder blocks. And again, you can see the cinder blocks or the broken concrete, the broken trash can, the discarded chair, scrap wood, scrap iron. And that is the only property I'm recommending to declare a nuisance for tonight. Would you like me to stop while you guys make a motion or just continue?
We'll continue with it. Go ahead.
Okay. Next, I am recommending a motion to abate for the following two properties. And again, doesn't mean we're going to go abate tomorrow, gives them additional time. 2024 MCC 052 at 1012 Missouri Avenue. And this property actually has cleared some, but the remaining items are scrap wood, scrap, excuse me, scrap metal, unlicensed vehicle. Unfortunately, my review was at the beginning of July, and these tags are from June. So they weren't expired. As you can see, the scrap iron, the scrap wood, the lattice. It looks like that pallet's being used as part of their porch patio decor. So it'd be the lattice and the scrap metal. Scrap wood, the lattice, looks like a frame of some sort. A packing crate. Tires, and the trailer with the broken concrete and the cinder blocks. Trailers are for hauling and not storing. Next property, 2024 MCC 088 at 1413 West 14th Street. This property, I showed a comparison from what it looked like in June to July. And usually when there's weed or yard debris, sometimes it covers those nuisance items. So I just wanted to point that out, that nuisance items still remain. It's starting to get a little covered up by the yard debris. So we have scrap wood, scrap metal, buckets, barrels, or receptacles. Porch, there are some items, some tools, scrap wood, scrap metal. Carpet or plastic sheeting under the porch. You can still see the coolers and the receptacles over there the previous month and the previous month before that. That is my recommendation for a motion to abate. I have not had any communication from these property owners. And next would be, I'm recommending for a resolution to rescind for the following ten properties. This first one, 2024 MCC 035. This is a three parcel lot, so it would be parcel ID 001054400, 001054300, and 001054200. 2024 MCC 069 at 1106 West 10. 2024 MCC 070 at 1104 West 10. 2024 MCC 078 at 1105 Missouri Avenue. 2024 MCC 085 at 1409 East Fair Acres. 2024 MCC 087 at 1415 West 14. 2024 MCC 094 at 1412 West 14. 2024 MCC 100 at 1416 West 15. 2024 MCC 102 at 1409 West 16. And 2024 MCC 105 at 1308 North Highway 83. And again, this is for a resolution to rescind, which means they have cleared the nuisance items that were first mentioned in the courtesy letter. And I would like to say that when McCook cleans up, McCook cleans up. So I'm actually having a great time with McCook. I was stopped about three times at my last review last week. But from property owners that had a lot of items but wanted to work with me and wanted to clean up. So it's been really good so far. So in summary, we've reviewed 256 properties. I sent out 110 courtesy letters. Eighty-two properties have been cleared, which includes tonight's recommendations. Twenty-five properties have been granted extensions. Fifteen of those properties have not had their declared letters delivered yet. So because I have not received delivery verification, I can take no action at this time. One property, we are recommending to declare a nuisance. And two properties, we are recommending for a motion to abate. And ten properties, we are recommending to rescind, which means to clear. And that is it for tonight?
Thanks, Erica.
Thank you. I'll be in the call tomorrow. Okay. We have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-15, approving the designations of nuisance properties deemed by Western Nebraska Development District and declared in resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, council?
That's great.
Oh, isn't it ever?
Wonderful.
Good job. Who made the motions?
I'm, uh, Jean made the motion, I second.
Okay, that was so quick, I couldn't show it to you. Okay. All those in favor of vote, yea, post name.
Four votes Cast J, no votes Cast N.
Okay, and then we're going to approve the request of West Central Nebraska Development that the properties located at 1012 Missouri Avenue and 1413 West 14 be abated.
So moved.
So I'll go ahead and second, George.
Any discussion, council? Okay, all those in favor of vote, yea, post name.
Four votes Cast J, no votes Cast N.
Okay, and then we are going to adopt Resolution 24, 2024-15, approving rescinding a portion of the previously declared nuisance property as deemed by Western, West Central Nebraska Development and as declared by Resolution Number 2024-13.
So moved. I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor of vote, yea?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
All these that are being declared to be cleared off the list. At 1416 West 15th Street, there's a steel Connex box, steel shipping container. Do we know, is that part of the zoning board up there? Across the street from the west, it's CBS Constructors, so.
I guess probably residential.
Okay.
So.
So I would say that's not, not to be declared not a nuisance, but it is. And we have a steel shipping container in somebody's property, and that's not my code, so. I don't know how we can clear it. I'm just curious. Erica, do you know what I'm talking about?
I'm sorry, I haven't heard that part of hearing, so Zoom is hard when I'm trying to listen, so if you can repeat that.
Yeah, I shared the hearing problems with you. 1416 West 15th Street, there's a steel Connex box, shipping container?
Okay.
That's just east of the two parking shelters, has four vehicles under it. Is that Connex box allowed up there?
Well, that, that doesn't go against the nuisance ordinance. We follow the nuisance ordinance. So not that I remember of McCook's ordinance does it go against, to have that kind of a container. But I can definitely look into that if you would like.
Please, I'm thank you.
I will let Leanne know.
I'll let Leanne know.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, council?
Thank you.
I noticed at 1207 West 14, you might take a look at that. There is a truck on a trailer in a yard and a whole bunch of carts around there. And then there are weeds at 1408, and that property doesn't look like it's anybody's property, and it's no trespassing signs there, but it's solid weeds.
Is it 1408 West 14?
Yep.
Okay, so I actually have had a conversation with that property owner, and I was looking into the zoning regulations because the property owner stated that the, he believes the first sixteen feet from the sidewalk onto the property is the city's responsibility. I've never heard that before, but I told him I would, I, I mean, I would look.
Right.
It was a thing, but I had never heard that before. So now that I have a response to that, I know I can move forward.
Any one?
Any is moved. Okay, anything else, council? Okay, all those in favor of vote, yea, post name. So good? You got everything?
I don't have your vote yet.
Okay, it said I was disconnected, but now I'm connected.
Yeah.
I'll open it up again.
Okay. Did you get it?
Yep.
Four votes Cast J, no votes Cast N. Okay, next item on the agenda is an update regarding the swimming pools and the ballpark project.
Yeah, I'll pass it over to Kyle. He actually had a chance to go up to the swimming pool today. State Nebraska inspectors were upstairs and let him kind of share the details of that conversation where we're at.
I'd like to joke around about building, but I don't want to. As Nate stated, the, actually going back to Friday, the state electrical inspector was out to inspect all the electrical work. Everything checked out absolutely fine with that, so we got past that hurdle. Today, we actually had a representative from Swim Time, they're the ones that provided all the mechanical equipment. They went through that with several of our employees, Tyler Kowinski, Ron Maris, Matt Coulter, and Debbie Kane. And we videotaped everything, walked them through everything. So we know enough to be dangerous, but it's going to take a little while to learn the system. But I have confidence that we will do that. You guys are taking it really seriously, and I appreciate that.
What was the name, Swim Time?
Swim Time.
Swim Time.
The representative was from Swim Time. Also there today was Cherie, she's our representative from Carruthers. And also Jeff from Lanfer Nielsen, they were both there during the inspections. We did have two, two state inspectors from the, two state inspectors from the state, obviously. They were out, there were just a few minor details that they need to address tomorrow, very minor. They needed to put up some additional fencing, we'll deal with it. Long story, but not a big deal. They might, they opened that up as I, as I came down here. About 4:30, that's, so that caught me up. Some authorized personnel, at least I am, Cherie said I just forgot to grab them, so she's getting them. We'll get those, and then some site bulbs for testing and stuff that may need to be installed. Those should be here tomorrow, and inspectors will find out all that. She just needs to send in some pictures, and we'll be good there. The lifeguards and pool managers, I believe, all of them there, all of them, except for one or two that were out of town, were present today, did a few tasks around the pool, they will be back tomorrow. After the inspection, Tyler Kowinski did sign off on the inspection, as he is our pool operator that's in-house. We will have four other pool operators that are on staff with the lifeguards and pool managers. The plan is to open the swimming pool Wednesday at 1:00 p.m. With a ribbon, ribbon cutting to take place at 12:30, and the ribbon cutting will take place at the shelter house. The plan is to be open one to seven, seven days a week, since we do have a short swim season. That is continued on lifeguards and operators, but we're pretty confident we'll be able to go one to seven at least early on. And like I mentioned before, we do have four pool operators and one on staff, which is Tyler. And more that is important is in order to operate the pool, we have to have at least one of them there at all times, so. Outside of that, everything checked off. Uh outside of that, everything checked off. We we should be good to go for Wednesday. Uh I know there's been some questions about grass and sprinkler system. We will be installing that this fall once the pool shuts down. The parking lot itself will not be accessible this season, um when we will be going in. Lan our uh Coruthers is still utilizing the parking lot for some things, but we're gonna redo the parking lot when they get cleared out. So hopefully we can get that done later this year or first thing next year, so. Just have to park on the street and then the college events center and stuff for now. Very exciting, very exciting. Um I can't say enough about Lanfer Nearson, the engineer, and I can't say, I definitely cannot say enough about Coruthers. They have headed out of the park. Fantastic and wonderful.
How many lifeguards did you say we have?
I'm thinking there were close to twenty there today.
Wonderful.
I don't have all their certificates because some of them took their class this last week. So I'll know more in the next day or s- two, but um I think we're gonna be pretty close. And um I think we might be able to get by with as far as people actually, lifeguards actually present out at the pool. I think we might be able to reduce that a little bit than what we originally thought, but we'll see where we're at on that. But based off my conversation with inspectors today, we may maybe a little bit less than that, so we'll see.
Great.
If you don't know how tempting it was today, James, I'm sure to jump on that slide today, but I didn't.
It could have been the first day.
I was, I put my hand in the pool. Outside of that, we're just excited. It it's gonna be a it's gonna be a madhouse up there on Wednesday, which I can't wait to see.
Yeah.
I can't wait to see. Uh we do have a max capacity of three hundred and sixty-nine.
Three sixty-nine, I wonder.
So um we will be counting. It'd be awesome to have more than that, but I hate to terminate, but just people be patient with us, we'll work through it. We'll make sure everybody gets an opportunity, so.
It's wonderful.
So I speak until one of the inspectors goes from North Platte, and she said she will be bringing her kids down to the McCook pool, so.
Wonderful. I'm sure there'll be a lot of kids that are excited for that pool.
It's something the the community should be very proud of.
Yes. Okay, and hopefully Mr. Bill will have a lot of ice. Yeah.
Yes. And we do have um um I'm trying to think here, I shouldn't say. We do have a couple of businesses in town that will be handing out some goodies. Um opening day, so.
You know, Horizon was talking about towels.
Yeah, I was gonna make a surprise. And just just to repeat, the uh Cook Community Foundation is covering the cost for admission this year. So we will still be having people sign in and and keeping track of of our attendees, but uh there is no charge for any anybody that attends the pool this year, so.
And McCook Community Foundation has paid for the lifeguard.
Lifeguarding, yeah, outside of the pool operatorship.
Been wonderful, yes, yes.
It's definitely been a group effort.
A group effort, that's right, all working together to get it done.
Do we have security cameras up there?
We do not. We we have, we have the ability to add those down the road, but that was not part of our original budget.
Corney got a surprise.
Yes, they did.
Well, if you saw what happened in Corney.
Yep, yep. So that that is something we ran conduit and everything for that type of thing, but again, that was not part of our budget. The sound system, it's my understanding, the sound system will be installed Wednesday morning, so we should be good there. And our refrigerator is being delivered tomorrow. The important, the important things.
And the toilets were?
The toilets were installed. I didn't flush it. One of the sinks worked and and one of the soap dispensers.
Okay. Just thinking of all the necessities.
Absolutely, and there's some things we need to, yeah, it's gonna be trial by fire, I'm sure. A few things we've probably missed out on, but we'll make it right.
It'll be good.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all the work you've done.
You betcha. It's definitely a group effort.
Yes.
Just awesome to see this.
It is.
Long time time.
Thanks Kyle.
Okay. Now we have another ordinance coming up. Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eighty, amending the City of McCook's Code of Ordinances by adding Chapter seventy-five, Section seventy-five point oh one, including seventy-five point ninety-nine, under the Title VII law code. Hi.
Hi. No, I think we're gonna still.
I moved to, okay, I moved to table uh. Coast home, sorry, sorry.
Sorry, to the next council meeting.
Thanks, Kyle.
I'll second it. Okay.
Twenty twenty-four ordinance number twenty twenty-four third dash thirty-eighty. Till the next council meeting.
Until the next council meeting, right. Okay.
What's the reason?
Um I think there's, we're still working on some details.
Do you want me to stop?
Yeah.
So when we met, it was.
We don't have a, we don't have a second. Or you, oh, sorry, 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 that was my bad.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh Chief, I and Tara met uh this Friday. And uh we discussed uh the changes that we had talked about at the last council meeting. And uh Chief uh got us a good start on the ordinances. Uh I made some changes as I was doing so. I was doing a little bit more research. Uh more I thought about it, I don't know if it's just as easy as saying, yeah, we we want kids in our restraint system. Restraint systems are made for cars and car seats. And the more I thought about it, I don't know if we know enough to, can we put a regular car seat in there? Will it attach the same way or will that cause more safety concerns? So we had some ordinances ready to go. Uh I just, it makes me nervous that we're rushing into this. Uh so I did find there's some voluntary national standards, uh safety standards for U T Bs, uh kind of like the federal standards for cars. Uh those are mandatory, these are voluntary for U T B users. But they do at least set forth some good guidelines. I'd like some more time to look at those and make sure we're applying those safety standards and the ordinances that we're bringing to the council. Uh we have till January, uh till these become effective, so I don't think there's any need to rush right now. We'll we'll make sure everything's in place by January. Uh just give us a little bit more time to look at this issue.
I appreciate that.
Are you satisfied with the seatbelt in?
Yeah.
The garage?
Yeah, I think we definitely, from the safety standards, the safety standards themselves have a seatbelt guideline, those voluntary standards that I was talking about. And I think we can go ahead and cite to those in our ordinance. Uh but car seats, the one where I was really questioning. Yeah, and one option, I thought it was a good idea by Nate, the one option that we could save, we're really concerned about car seats is no kids under the age of eight, which is the age that you can age out of a car seat in Nebraska. Just no one under eight uh allowed on these while they're in operation. Maybe that's the easiest way to go instead of saying everyone, but they have to have a car seat.
Because there is an open, I mean, the sides are open.
Yeah.
And that's the thing, that's the problem.
Uh I I agree, I see some big issues.
I I think though other communities have addressed this, haven't they? Or are we the only one?
I did not see a requirement for a car seat in any of the sample ordinances I was looking at.
Amazing. Amazing. So we're setting up standards that other communities haven't thought about.
Well, that's the problem when you don't have a statewide law. Everyone is going into this with, the state has resources to do studies, look at other states, what they've done, and we're kind of doing it by the seat of our pants. And that really makes me nervous when you're talking about kid safety.
Okay. Any other questions?
So we're voting to postpone till later date?
Yes.
Which would be obvious. But he was also saying, talking about January.
January first will be the effective date per the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So we've got time to go ahead and do all registrations and everything, so we're, we gotta work with police departments so that way they're comfortable with registering and licensing these U T Bs.
That's our drop date, basically, have to have all this stuff.
I think about, I worked up at the fairgrounds when we had the rides up there for the little kids and and you know, they were being strapped in, but there was this one little person that was too small in order to get strapped in. And to explain to a little person, you're too tiny in order to do this, and tears rolling down the face. And I'm thinking as families, you know, I know that we have to be responsible, but so do they. And so what the person at Freedom Fest did was he slowed down the ride, made it that this little person could be on there real slow, and it worked. It worked, but um, yeah. Families are families. Okay? Okay, anything else? Okay, all those in favor to post code, vote okay.
Four votes cast Jay, no votes cast Nae.
Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eighty-one, amending Section ninety-five point thirty-five, weeds, litter, stagnant water, adding additional provisions, which include all specific nuisances listed in ninety-five point oh two of the Cook City ordinances. Um I introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eighty-one by title and ask the clerk to please read the title.
An ordinance in the City of McCook, Nebraska, amending the City of McCook Code of Ordinances, Chapter ninety-five entitled Nuisance, Health, and Sanitation, Section ninety-five point three-five G, weeds, litter, stagnant water, adding subsection F, listing specific nuisances provided this ordinance shall be made a part of the City of McCook Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances conflict to with and dividing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Okay. Do we have a recommendation?
Order number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eighty-one has been introduced, read by title, and I move to approve upon its third and final reading.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote okay.
Four votes cast Jay, no votes cast Nae.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is an update regarding the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Subdivision Regulation Projects.
As the council is aware, we are in the middle of rewriting our comprehensive plan and our zoning subdivision regulations. Um we're doing so with the help of our consultant, Miller and Associates. Craig Fennett and Jason Cohns are are leads over at Millers to kind of help lead us through this process. It is a lot of work, it's a very long and painstaking process. If you ever had a chance to read the zoning regulations, you'll understand uh just how painstaking it can be. Uh but what we are doing as a staff, we met with Millers, uh it was probably about a month ago or so. Barry, Mooney, our building inspector, and then Tara Cutter and myself, we drove up to Corney. Um we wanted to make sure we were on the same page, uh make sure that uh we were comfortable with the uh provisions that they had made based upon our suggestions. Uh they were forwarded back over to us, and so Tara, Barry, and I, every day, we spend an hour and a half just going through the zoning regulations, making sure that the proposed zoning regulations are understood by us so that way we're comfortable with them. So it's taking a little bit of time, but we didn't do that last time around when we did our zoning regulation update back in two thousand thirteen and fourteen, so we're doing it the right way now. Um so our anticipated finish date with our review of the zoning regs uh will probably either occur, it's gonna occur sometime in August. Uh based upon our conversation with Craig, we believe we need to give thirty days notice to everyone just to assure that everybody's had a chance to review it before we take it uh to the next round of uh meetings with the uh zoning committee that was established by the council. Uh so we'll have that meeting with the zoning committee, then we'll take the final product. Uh if there are no changes, if there are changes, we'll make the revisions. If not, we'll take it through the planning commission and the council for approval. Uh same thing with the comp plan, I haven't seen a draft of that yet, I know that Jason's working on that, so. Uh then also subdivision regulations, uh they are being worked on as well at this time. So it's a slow process, but you want to make sure that you do it right. Really, when you start talking about planning for future events, the heart of of the planning effort comes from the established zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, and the comp plan. The comp plan is extremely important because it really establishes what our future goals as a community are. So uh like I said, seconds of time, uh we're on the same page with Millers. Uh we just want to make sure that we are comfortable with what gets presented uh when we have our public meeting, uh where the committee is going to get together, take a look at those things, and then we'll send that out to to the planning commission and council for final passage. But we hadn't talked about it for a while. I think it was important that we brought this to the council so the council knew exactly where we were at. Like I said, hopefully by August, we're done with our reviews, that way we can have a meeting in September.
Any questions? Okay. Is there any council comments tonight? Okay, at six seventeen P M, I declare there being no other business to come before the council. This meeting is adjourned.
We don't have to do anything, just sit there and watch.
Is he adjourned for?